You know, in Max Rose's territory. It's I I live in the suburbs of Staten Island, also known as Bay Ridge, Brooklyn. So it's it's great to be in this wonderful island. Welcome to our second public hearing and the third meeting of the Charter Review Commission of 2024 and the first of our two meetings in Staten Island. As we committed to and promised, we will host two meetings in every borough. Yesterday, we were in Queens. Today, we are in Staten Island, and we will be announcing some meetings shortly. Let me thank, first of all, my friend Borough President Vito Fassella and his team for hosting us here in Staten Island Borough Hall. I am Carlos Assura, Chair of the Commission, and I am joined by an esteemed group of members. I will start with my left, Ruben Diaz Jr., Lorraine Grillo, Ken Nye, Max Rose, Jackie Rowe Adams, and Kyle Brad. So welcome, everybody, and including our Executive Director, General Counsel, and the entire team that is working so hard on getting this done. I'm going to ask our commissioners before I begin to just give a quick good morning. So Ruben, Ruben, we always start with you, subject.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I don't mind. Good morning to the island of Shaolin, as we call it where we come from. I'm bringing greetings from the birthplace of hip hop, and it's great to be here this morning. Yesterday, we had, I thought was a good start, and we were able to hear from the people out in Queens some provocative and some great suggestions as to how we should approach with this commission. Let me just put this out to those who are viewing and for further meetings. I think that every borough should have like a friendly competition. So for all of you who are going to come to these hearings, I would suggest that you look over the charter, and I would love for there to be this friendly competition as to who can come up with the most, you know, innovative ideas and thoughts that we as a commission, who are filled with distinguished commissioners, how is it that we can do something so impactful with this commission that Mayor Adams has formed? So it's good to be here on this island. I look forward to hearing from everyone here this morning, and I look forward to everyone moving forward to take me up on my challenge. Good morning to all.
I love the challenge.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lorraine Grillo, and I just love being in the borough of Staten Island. It's my favorite place because, as president of school, former president of School Construction Authority, I built a lot of schools in Staten Island, and I loved every minute of it. Everybody was so happy and so grateful. So hopefully that we will get some good input for this commission and work really hard to solve the problems of the city of New York.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Ken Nye. Thank you for coming to the Staten Island Borough here today to join us. And a unique opportunity to voice your concerns about the direction of the city. We have an opportunity here to review the city charter, and we would love to gather your input and whatever issues or concerns that you may have. We are eager to listen to you and, you know, put forward good government, and that's something that we had said previously, and I think everyone can agree that that's what we are striving for. Thank you again, and I look forward to hearing from everyone.
Morning, everybody. It is great to be home for one of these events. I look forward to hearing all of your thoughts and concerns and continuing to serve the city with delivering a sound recommendation on revision. Thanks again.
Good morning, Staten Island. Staten Island in the house. Well, we're in the house with you this morning, Staten Island, and I'm Jackie Rowe Adams, and I hail from Harlem, but that's all right. Staten Island is beautiful. It really is, Diane. It really is. But everybody say, oh, it's so far. We got here like in a half an hour from Harlem. I mean, how cool is that? So I just want to say I'm honored to be here with the team, with the other commissioners, because we have work to do, and you know that, and that's why you're here this morning, because you care. And that's what we need. We need people to care about their community, about their city, of what's going on. And I said, first meeting, I said, you know, you have to know what's going on, and you have to be able to help fix it. So this is your opportunity to be the voice for the voiceless and let people know that you know what's going on. And that's the song I love by Marvin Gaye, "What's Going On." And so, again, congratulations to you all that's sitting there, so we could get the job done, and we want you to voice your opinion and your concerns. It's so important. Thank you.
If that doesn't get you ready for this morning, nothing will. Kyle, you have a tough act to follow.
I know I do. I always do when I sit behind Jackie. Well, good morning, everyone. I'm Kyle Bragg again. I'm Kyle from the borough of Queens, and it's actually a real honor to be here in the beautiful, in the beautiful borough of Staten Island. This is my second go around the Charter Revision Commission. I've had the pleasure of serving as Chair in 2019 under de Blasio. It's very important, the work that we will get done through this Charter Revision Commission, I think, to make government work for everyone. We need to hear from the people that it impacts the most, which are all of you and those who we hope to be talking to in the future. People will come out and voice their opinions and concerns about how to make government better work for everyone. And and with your engagement and the participation, we'll be able to put together, we hope, some really good changes that will impact all of our communities and, again, make government work for all of us. Good government is hearing from the people, and that's why we're here today, and we'll be continuing to have these meetings and to hear from those folks that are impacted by the government that serves them. So thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. We are joined virtually by our Vice Chair, Dr. Hazel Dukes, by the Reverend Herbert Daughtry, Stephanie McGraw, and Rabbi Ayim Steinmetz. Would any of you like to say anything before I proceed? No? Okay. Okay, so I want to I want to touch upon something Kyle and Jackie said, which is we are here to listen to the people. And well, I've learned, this is my third Charter Committee, that oftentimes people who come to Charter Commission meetings, who testify in person, or now we are adding virtual testimony, which allows more people to participate, oftentimes those people are not coming to talk about the charter. They are coming because they are frustrated, they have an issue, and they want somebody to hear what they're saying. So I am saying to people, to New Yorkers, we're here to listen. Doesn't mean we can answer everything. It doesn't mean we can solve everything, but at least we can hear you and at least share your concerns and your comments with people who may be able to do something. So that is important, and it is important for New Yorkers to know that this is a group of individuals committed to listening to your voice. So a couple words. We were formed by Mayor Adams on May 21st. We are tasked with reviewing the entire city charter and recommending changes that will help city government work more efficiently and better serve all New Yorkers. We will be soliciting recommendations and comments on how to improve city government from members of the public at forums like this and from experts in certain areas at forums that we will be hosting later this month. At the end of the process, the commission will determine what proposals to take to the voters in the form of a ballot question or maybe more than one question, and those questions or questions will appear on the ballot November 5th in the general. Today, we are excited to welcome, as we said, folks to Staten Island to provide comments in person and via Zoom and also in writing. So we're excited to get testimony from a variety of sources. This is our input session, and we are excited that it is the first of two that will be in Staten Island. We will be back in Staten Island on the evening of June 24th at Curtis High School, and so that'll be exciting. And on June 13th, we will have an issue forum and public hearing on fiscal responsibility at New York Law School in Tribeca. Please tell your friends, please tell your neighbors to come out and share your comments. We will do our best to accommodate everyone who wishes to speak. We are going to try and stick to a three-minute rule if we if we can, and time allows, I will be happy to extend the three minutes for the speaker. So with that, I'm going to begin, and as I said, thank you to Borough President Vito Fassella. Excuse me. And we have with us today Daniel Mastor Jr., who is the Legal Counsel to the Borough President. Daniel, welcome.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. As you just heard, my name is Daniel Hell Mastor Jr. I am Legal Counsel to the Staten Island Borough President, and I will be delivering his testimony to the commission today. First, I'd like to welcome the Charter Commission to Staten Island, the borough whose residents and elected officials are often the least satisfied consumers of New York City services and who often find themselves on the proverbial short end of the stick when it comes to governmental dysfunction. As you're aware, the 1989 City Charter Section 203 required the City Planning Commission to adopt criteria that are now referred to as the Fair Share provisions of the New York City Charter. I'll just read some of that paragraph. The criteria shall be designed to further the fair distribution among communities of the burdens and benefits associated with city facilities. Now, this is a lovely sentiment and a lovely verbiage, but unfortunately, it's only aspirational. It's not something that's self-executing. For example, when this provision, this particular provision was adopted and inserted into the charter in 1989, Staten Island was the only borough in the city of New York that was collecting all of the city's garbage and where all of the city's garbage was dumped. Now, that's kind of a prima facie proof that we were doing more than our fair share with regard to this particular burden of government. So for Staten Islanders, right from the beginning, 1989, when the Fair Share provisions were adopted, we've kind of looked at those Fair Share provisions as being an empty slogan with regard to our own treatment. That's an historical example of not being treated fairly, but it's not an isolated incident, and it's representative of a continuum that persists right up to the headlines of today. For example, the environmental assessment for the city's congestion pricing plan was sold to residents of the city as a plan that was going to result in less traffic and less air pollution. But in verifiable fact, if you go through the 5,000-page study, the study actually found that on Staten Island, traffic would increase and pollution would increase, and that those increases in both traffic and pollution would persist through the year 2024. So approximately another 25 years of more air pollution and more traffic on Staten Island, and there would be no mitigation efforts that were offered in that study, although they have been offered to the Bronx. Staten Island is the only borough that can say that they're being harmed this way by this program. Now, I understand that it's an MTA program and that falls under the governor, but the one of the project sponsors of congestion pricing is the New York City Department of Transportation. So the city is a partner in this new initiative. Let me share with you one more current example of harmful disparate treatment for Staten Island. It's right now in the planning process. It's in the process of being planned. The so-called City of Guess for Carbon Neutrality passed by the New York City Council on December 6th of last year, 2023, it effectively changes the zoning and use group requirements for storage battery energy systems. They're better known as BEST units, Battery Energy Storage Systems in New York City. Before the 6th of December 2023, these units were considered inherently dangerous and could only be located in commercial zones, far from residential areas. That changed on December 6, 2023, when the New York City Planning Commission proposed and the New York City Council approved the placement of BEST units in one and two-family residential zones. Now, just to give you a visual aid, and I'll submit these along with copies of my remarks. When you look at BEST units in other parts of the United States or in other parts of the world, they're not in residential neighborhoods. They, in fact, they look like they've been constructed on the moon. They're so far away from any kind of business or or other activity, human activity, and that's because they are inherently dangerous. I hope the folks that voted for this provision, allowing these units to be in one and two-family residential neighborhoods, I hope they've been listening to or reading the news for the last month, because in Otay Mesa, that's O-T-A-Y, new word, M-E-S-A, Otay Mesa, just outside San Diego, a BEST unit went on fire on May 15th, 2024, and it burned for two weeks. It burned for two weeks. During that time, millions of gallons of water poured on the blaze, to no avail, because water cannot put out of this kind of battery, these lithium-ion batteries. Fire evacuation orders were issued, and not once, but twice, these battery storage units reignited, and the fire department had to go back out there. The fire is only part of the problem with these units, and I think an even larger problem is the toxic gases that are let off when these things burn. And remember, this burned, this fire burned for two weeks. The fluoride gases, the carbon monoxide, these gases can migrate off a site even if the fire itself has been contained. So my worry is both the fire and the toxic gases that would be released into a residential neighborhood, for example. This is only the most recent battery storage fire. For the record, there have been four such fires in New York State within the past 13 months, four fires in New York State in the past 13 months. Now, closer to home, as of April 19th of this year, for New York City, there are 31 battery storage sites proposed for New York City, 15 of which are proposed for Staten Island. That's just under half. That's 48%. I'll exaggerate and say half of those battery units are going to be on Staten Island. Many of them are going to be in densely populated areas or densely populated commercial areas. I hope that the lesson we learned from the Otay Mesa fire just two weeks ago, they put it out finally at the end of May, I hope the lesson we learned is that if we don't know how to extinguish one of these fires once they start, then we shouldn't be placing them in residential neighborhoods. We really need to know much more about the science and the imperfections of these batteries than we know now before we start putting them in residential areas. Now, this leads me to my proposed revision for the city charter for your consideration, bringing all this home to a solid recommendation for the commission. My proposal is that going forward, I probably shouldn't say it this way. Currently, every proposed law before the city council has to have attached to it a statement of fiscal impact. How much is this going to cost us, essentially? Our proposal is that going forward, every proposed law should also require a statement of compliance with the Fair Share provisions of the New York City Charter. And if they can't state that it's going to be in compliance, state why it's not going to be in compliance. Such a statement will ensure that those who propose our laws, as well as those who enact our laws, will better understand the impacts of those laws on our neighborhoods. There are also variants of the Fair Share provisions. For example, while Staten Islanders may perennially, and for good reason, complain about being both a literal and figurative dumping ground for everything that's unwanted in the other boroughs, Staten Islanders also complain that they don't receive their share of the benefits of government. Remember, Fair Share was supposed to balance the benefits and burdens. For example, here's a list. Okay, the 62 New York City agency headquarters with their addresses and the number of employees, and some of these employ thousands of people. These agencies bring jobs and economic activity to wherever they're located. While the boroughs of Manhattan, Brooklyn, and Queens are well represented, there's not a single New York City agency headquartered on Staten Island. And we have space right here at the ferry terminal, which would be very easy to get to for anyone from the rest of the city, and of course, the ferry's a free ride. We have adequate space here. Please give us some benefits of government. We'd be glad to to take them. Further examples of lack of fair distribution of the benefits and services on Staten Island range from the ridiculous to sublime. And here I have to mention the city's new Ur in Luck program. Yes, urine is a play on the word urine. Ur in Luck program, and it's an initiative that's going to bring public bathrooms to the five boroughs. Now, fortunately for Manhattan, Manhattan's going to receive 28 of these new bathrooms. Staten Island is going to get seven. Again, from the ridiculous to the sublime, Staten Island is many times larger in terms of geography than Manhattan, and I'm sure if you're walking in Manhattan, there's going to be a free bathroom somewhere within a stone's throw. In closing, until more is done to ensure the Fair Share provisions of the city charter are met, these provisions will be nothing more than an empty slogan, and the city of New York can expect to hear further rumblings of secession from the people of Staten Island. And thank you for your fine consideration of these remarks. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments? Thank you. I'm going to ask.
I'm sorry, I did have a quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
In your testimony earlier, you spoke about the you'd said, you mentioned a date, you said 2024, and you said it'd be 20 years, but it was 2024, I think you said. I wanted to get the
Through 2040 through 20
Forty-four. Twenty
Through 2048.
Forty-eight. You had said 2024. I just wanted to get the date correct. Thanks.
Forty-eight.
Thank you. I have a question. Yes, Chairman, I'm sorry. Thank you for that testimony. Question, is there an example of, in the city of New York, of any facility where they did comply with Section 203, where they, where we've seen a compliance on, so it's, you know, for instance, the distribution among the communities for, it says here, burdens and benefits associated with the facility consistent with community needs for services and efficient cost, effective delivery? Have you ever seen an example where there was a compliance of that?
I think there are compliance, for example, if there are, if they're distributing, for example, birth control for safety from AIDS, they're going to make sure that facilities are available in every borough. They're not going to have facilities only available in one place. And I think it is aspirational. This is what we try to do. I would just like to see it. I would like to see it in print when a law is being enacted. How do you see from this point on, how is this going to affect various neighborhoods in the city of New York, if you know in advance?
Should, second, I'm sorry, should environmental and even health impact statements be considered?
Yes. Short answer, yes.
I have one more, one more comment, maybe question. I mean, I hear you clearly on this battery storage issue, which is, I think, vital issue for Staten Islanders. Sometimes science and technology advances quicker than we can really understand the impacts that it will cause, the human impact. What, but I'm trying to understand, how would you address this through the Charter Revision Commission as as a challenge for for our city?
Well, I think that you could have foreseen that most of these storage facilities would be on Staten Island, because we have more space and open space available than the other boroughs. It's going to be difficult to put storage fields anywhere else in the city of New York. So I think it could have been readily anticipated that the only place these would, could be adapted would be on Staten Island. And sure enough, when the applications came in, half of them are for Staten Island.
The question was, how would you address this through the Charter Revision Commission to make sure that if they're going to be created, that they're creating in a safe manner that does not impact our residential communities?
Well, if if you were to put, if you were to revise the provisions in the charter, the Fair Share provisions in the charter, you would put in that if the city council is going to vote on this, as they did, they should understand that it will probably affect Staten Island more than the other boroughs for the following reasons.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I am going to ask Assemblyman Michael Tennessis, who is on Zoom, to provide his remarks and testimony. Assemblyman, good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. First of all, thank you very much for meeting on Staten Island today. I'm coming to you from Albany as we wrap up the legislative session. Today's remarks, I just want to be very brief, but I want to address certain things that the New York City Council has done in recent memory, especially when it comes to bills that involve public safety. As was noted by the prior speaker, many times the city council has acted without impunity, without input from agencies that would be affected by these laws, without input from the community that will be affected by these laws. And, you know, in the New York State Assembly, when we pass legislation, we have to jump through various hurdles in order to pass that legislation, and there are needed to be organizations, bodies, local governments that would have to be in agreement for us to pass those pieces of legislation. As city council, however, continues to pass bills that affect our daily lives, affect our city agencies, affect our communities without any type of responsibility, and they do that continuously, and they have done that continuously for the past few years. City government, just like the federal government, just like the state government, it's supposed to be a balance of powers. It is not supposed to be a bull pit to pass whatever agenda any specific member may have. You're supposed to be passing bills and laws to benefit New York City as a whole and to benefit our communities. So although I'm not going to go into specific instances with you today, I do ask that as you go through this process, please keep in mind that there needs to be a fair and adequate balance, and the city council should not just be allowed to pass any type of bills without having analysis, any type of input from agencies as to what these would do for the agencies, for the community. And, you know, unfortunately, on Staten Island, myself, my elected colleagues, whether they be from the city council, from the state assembly, 80% of our time is fighting against various initiatives that the city council passed. And I, and I say this to you, not only as an assembly member, but as a former employee of the New York City Council. I worked for a New York City Council member for a few years, so I do have a little bit of experience in that process. At that time, the New York State City, I'm sorry, the New York City Council was a much different body than it is today. So going forward, I ask that you take that into consideration for the betterment of our community and for the betterment of our city, and thank you so much for joining us here today.
Thank you, Assemblyman. Any questions or comments? Kyle, please.
Thank you again, Assemblyman. I appreciate your comments. I just wanted to understand in in regards to the Charter Revision, what would you recommend on how to address this issue? Because I agree that on how to address this issue, because I agree that the community needs to be engaged in particularly these type of legislative laws that are changing the fabric of this city and and how government engages our communities. And unlike unlike this forum, there should be more forums with 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 the community to get their reaction or opinions to this type of legislation that has a great impact on our city. So how would you address this, your concern, through the Charter of Vision Commission as putting out something for the people to vote on?
So one potentiality, and and I, and I want to use this as an example, there was a bill that was passed in the New York State Senate and in the New York State Assembly a few years back in regard specifically to homeless shelters. I believe that at that point, then Senator Savino and Assemblymember Fall passed a bill that would require public hearings to be held before a decision to open up a homeless shelter. Using that as an example, maybe something could be done where a public hearing is required in our communities. Perhaps in our specific communities on site to make it easier for people to attend the hearings as opposed to just doing hearings at City Hall and forcing people to come into lower Manhattan. That's one possibility. I'm sure that there are other, many other possibilities, and they will come as we, as you continue the process. But I just want you to have that theory in your minds as we go forward because I don't see any type of end in sight when it comes to the New York City Council in regards to the laws that they continuously pass. There needs to be more accountability and more transparency. And it shouldn't be, the community should not be up in arms after a bill is passed by the New York City Council. They should have their input before it is passed. And that's something that that I would ask you to keep in mind as you go forward in your, in this process.
Well, thank you. We also heard someone in Queens that our hearing yesterday regards this assembly issue, one both public safety, but also mayoral control, and that the the city council is passing legislation without engaging the community. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Yes, thank you, Assemblyman. Music to my ears because that's why we're here today. That's why we're here, to make sure that our city and our community voices are heard because we are the taxpayers, you are the taxpayers. And we have to make sure that the ones that don't understand what's going on know what's going on in their community, in their city, and that is very key. So we have to be a part of the voting, the hearing, we have to have these hearings. We gotta let our people understand, and that's why I thank Mayor Adams for being concerned and caring about his city and caring about the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, Assemblyman, good luck with your final day. Thank you. I'm now going to call Frank Morano to come to you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
I wonder what you're speaking on.
First of all, I I I'm limited to three minutes. I have a whole book worth of recommendations on a wide variety of subjects. If I had extra time, I'd be sharing with you all of them. Welcome to Staten Island, and the good news for those of you who are on your first commission is that Max Rose, since this is his home borough, has to buy lunch today. But fortunately for you, there's a wide variety of great restaurants in the neighborhood. I don't think the Congressman knew that when he agreed to serve on this. Also, first, my compliments on behalf of all of Staten Islanders in terms of your staff selections. I don't think you could have a better selection for executive director than Staten Island's own Diane Savino. We got a firsthand seat for eighteen years for what an incredible representative that she was, and a big part of the reason for that was because she assembled an incredible staff with people like Rob Cataldo, and I'm glad both of them are on the commission staff as well. Staten Islanders feel well represented, not only with Congressman Rose there, but with staff like that. I do want to try and focus my remarks on the areas that you guys are focused on as a commission because there's a short amount of time, and I know you're focused primarily on public safety and fiscal responsibility, as is your mandate from the mayor. And really, just speaking on public safety today, one of the things that can be done, which will safeguard public safety for generations of New Yorkers and maybe turn back the clock on some of the bad public safety steps we've seen these last few years, is nonpartisan elections. Now, people may say, well, what sense does that make? How does electoral reform have anything to do with what's going on in terms of safety in our streets? It has everything to do with it. Because if you look now at what's gone on in the city council, we have seen the most anti-cop body in New York City's history pass legislation after legislation that's overtly hostile to the NYPD. You know it. I don't have to list all them for you, although I'd be happy to. This is rapidly becoming one of the most anti-police entities in the entire country. It's not progressive. I'm not going to call it progressive. It's anti-cop. And now, why does that happen? Why do they pass things like defunding the police and making police fill out a barrage of paperwork whenever they have a conversation with someone? It's because in forty-three out of fifty-one council districts and City One, the only meaningful election is the Democratic primary. When all you have to do is win a Democratic primary, the only thing that you do is campaign to win the Democratic primary. And that leads to people staking out the most radical left-wing positions possible because they know that's their only method of getting election, getting elected. Fortunately, there is another way, and you can make this transition to nonpartisan elections. This would result in a more sane and sober elected official. It would result in a constituency that includes people that are not Democratic primary voters feeling like they're represented. It can be done, and I hope you guys will put this on the ballot this year in order for New Yorkers to have the choice as to whether it should be done. Thank you.
So I have a question. I know you, we know each other a long time, and you've talked about this for many years. Explain to to this commission in your proposal, how it would work.
So I would suggest that at the issue forum on the thirteenth, that this be one of the issues that you look at with experts who can delve into a wide variety of the possibilities because there are several ways to go. Personally, I think the simplest, the easiest for New Yorkers to understand, given their thirty-year track record in voting in elections like this, the easiest to implement without requiring new voting machines or people learn methods of other methods of voting, is to simply do what we do for nonpartisan special elections in this city for every election in this city. The same method that elected Christine Quinn and Jimmy Otto and Gifford Miller, where you have a nonpartisan election, which now includes ranked choice voting in that special election, that should be the election. And as far as fiscal responsibility goes, i- if you were so inclined, you could have just one round of elections, saving the cost of the first round of elections entirely. Now, you may hear expert testimony and determine maybe that's not the best course of action. Other people, in other entities in other cities do it in different ways. But in Oakland, in San Francisco, and in a lot of other municipalities around the country, they do one round of ranked choice voting, and in those two cities, it, excuse me, one round of nonpartisan elections, and in those two cities, it includes ranked choice voting. It prevents somebody from slipping in with a plurality. It prevents the taxpayers from footing the bill for two different directions. And most importantly, the voters get to have a say, a meaningful say in every step of the process, which they are completely denied now. I made the reference to your candidacy in two thousand and one, where you, having lived, grown up in Brooklyn and having a lot of relationships in Brooklyn, those relationships included Republicans and independents. When you lost that Democratic primary, not one of them could vote for you. And I happen to know personally quite a few people that were a little ticked off, they couldn't vote for you. And I I think that's not a unique story. I could point to election after election where that's been replicated around the city. Why? Why don't people that are paying the bills for these elections deserve the say in terms of who's representing them? We have a system now of taxation without representation. I'm not asking you to change it. I'm just asking you to put the question on the ballot and let us, the voters, decide whether we want to change it.
I have a question.
Yes, please, anyone that wants to jump in. Ruben, do you of of, and I I don't, I want to stay away from a specific issue. In this case, you brought up defund the police.
Only because I know that's the mandate in terms of public.
But do we, do you know of anybody on the city council now or before who voted to defund the police who won in a nonpartisan special election?
I'm sure I could find some examples, right? But in, I'd have to look at the specifics of those races.
So a nonpartisan election did not stop someone from being elected who voted on an issue that you don't agree with?
Would have to look at the specific election, but probably not.
Would you say that the the overwhelming majority of people who are registered as, say, Democrats are also against defunding the police?
I would say that, yeah.
I would say that too, and I'm from the Boogie Down Bronx.
Right.
But but then what what can, what is, what do you say to those who who don't come out and vote?
Well, I would say two things. One, the people that vote in Democratic primaries aren't representative of the Democratic Party as a whole. And I would say that they tend to be more representative of the most partisan and the more strident ideologues in the process and not representative of the general public.
But but they are, for instance, in the Bronx, the overwhelming majority of registered voters, not, I don't want to say that. I don't have the imperfect.
You have a Republican there.
I don't have, I don't have the, I don't have the imperfect data in front of me. But there's a great deal of the registered voters in the Bronx are registered Democrats. A lot of them do not come out and vote in a Democratic primary election. They do come out in bigger numbers in a general election. And in the general election, they can vote for whoever. They can cross party lines. So maybe, I don't know, the solution is a nonpartisan primary election when if someone who is putting out their record currently now as a person who wants to defund the police, even though I believe like you that the majority of the registered Democrats are not in favor of defunding the police, just don't come out and vote during the primary election.
So why not simply have the election be what we have as the special election now, a nonpartisan election on General Election Day, which has a wider degree of public turnout? The problem as it stands now in the Bronx and other areas that are primarily one party is that the general election doesn't matter. It's it's a pro forma enterprise. You know, the right, honorable former city councilman and state senator Ruben Diaz Senior ran in a Democratic primary for Congress. And I realize we're talking about municipal elections here, but the same principle applies. He has an enormous amount of support among Republicans and independents, as I'm sure you know, and are occasionally frustrated by. But he wasn't able to be a choice in the general election for any of those folks. And yet, those folks are still paying the taxes for the Democratic Party to have their selection process. And by the way, I live in the South Shore of Staten Island, and I'm not a Republican. Same thing applies in the South Shore of Staten Island. If you're a Democrat or an independent in the South Shore of Staten Island, you have no meaningful say in who your elected officials are. Why should New Yorkers be paying the taxes for these elections that don't matter?
I'm struggling with Mr. Chairman on this one, and and I'm looking forward to hearing more from you in other, in future hearings, I suppose. You'll come, is, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure that by having a nonpartisan election that A, that you get an increase in voter turnout during the nonpartisan primary election. Right? And B, and B, I'm not sure that you still get a resort in terms of philosophy because according to, and we talked about this yesterday, if you have, say, the top two, three, four, five voters in that nonpartisan primary election, then go off to the general election, those top two, three, four, five individuals could be of like mind and may all support a certain philosophy that you may not agree with in a general election.
Yeah, I don't see Tom Delay getting elected in Harlem or, you know, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez getting elected in the South Shore of Staten Island. That's not going to happen. What this is a means of is actually having elected officials that are more representative of the community, which really isn't the case now. You know, in terms of the city council, for instance, you have about thirty percent of the city of New York that votes Republican, right? And yet, if we were to equate that to council seats, they would have about fifteen council seats. Instead, they have, I guess, about six. So New York is already a liberal city, as many large cities are, but the body representing New Yorkers is far more left-wing than the population is. And I believe that's because they're they're not being represented. Now, as for the question you raise about comparing voter turnout in nonpartisan elections versus.
Is that where the real indictment is, right? Where you, you, the real indictment is on the people who are registered to vote who don't come out and vote in on in any given primary regardless of the party. That's the real indictment.
Can I just step in for for a second here? And you're you're a master communicator, and I've always appreciated that about you. But there's something I think is getting lost here. You you're not really talking about something that's nonpartisan. What you're talking about is first past the post.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. So, for instance, I mentioned the, your example yesterday. Everyone agreed that you did a great job as a congressman. I believe the reason you lost is because you were running as a Democrat. And you had that, what a lot of people in Staten Island viewed as a scarlet letter, given what was happening on a national perspective, stuff that you had very little to do with. What if there was no Democratic label on the ballot, no Republican label on the ballot?
Let me interrupt one second. We all know that whether it's nonpartisan or the system we have today, people, voters will know what the person's ideology is. They will know if they are a Democrat, a Republican, or an independent.
So that's great. That's part of outreach and communicating to voters what you stand for and what you believe in. But as far as that notion that an ideology is attached to our partisan identification, for about fifteen years in Brooklyn, both Dove Hyken and Charles Barron were running for office in Brooklyn as Democrats. Now, I can't think of two people with more diametrically opposed views than Dove Hyken and Charles Barron. And yet, they were both nominated by the Brooklyn Democratic Party. What clue do the voters get about their ideology?
Won their primary. And and I think, I think there's a couple of things, and and we will, and I'm actually going to ask the staff to ensure that we do have experts that appear at a hearing and a forum that talk about this. But we do have elections, and I think, Ruben, you made a point, and I think you did as well, people don't vote in primaries, and the number, the numbers are the numbers, the facts are the facts. Primaries have small turnout. Do we believe, and this is where I think the experts and the facts can tell us, do we believe that if a June primary was for all voters, would it be more people voting? Or would it just be the same number of people just thrown into one part?
Or if there was a special election in November on the General Election Day, would there be more people voting? And I think the answer to that is yes. When your predecessor commissioners, commission studied this issue in two thousand and two and two thousand and three, they solicited expert testimony that reviewed, they did a comparative analysis of cities with nonpartisan elections around the city, around the country, and around the state, by the way, and they found that, yes, in areas where all things are equal, where there are nonpartisan elections, there are, there is an increase in turnout. And in the twelve years that New York City had proportional representation in the thirties and forties, there was greater turnout, and those not, those proportional representation elections were nonpartisan. You had anybody able to compete as a candidate, anybody able to vote. The system we have now is discriminatory towards minority views. It is discriminatory towards people that are not in the majority party. It's unfair to candidates and unfair to voters. As I alluded to yesterday, Eric Adams acknowledged this in two thousand and three, and this is exactly what Fiorella LaGuardia talked about when he implemented proportional representation and said, there's no Democratic or Republican way to clean a street. I I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, why keep the system as it is now? Who's benefiting from this, aside from the cottage industry of consultants, lobbyists, and the the shallow state that knows how to make money in terms of gaming out elections?
Okay, more to come. Any other facts you look like? You look like.
The chairman did sort of cut you off there.
No, no, I I I appreciate him bringing up all of our respective political scar tissues. It's like a therapy session.
I think you guys heard that okay.
But all I would just draw the commission's attention to, the party affiliation matters. Political parties matter. They serve a role, and they're important for democracy. But there is, I think, a really strong example of what your North Star is in California, which is just the first two past the post. You know, that, for instance, there was a chance that the California Senate general election was going to be Adam Schiff versus Katie Porter. It was just going to be the, the two that got the most votes in the primary? And then they advance on to the general electorate where you have a different electorate than a primary. So, as you're thinking about this, and I'm sure we will continue to hear from you publicly, privately, and all the rest? I would just urge you to think about ways in which you could advance your general cause here? Without waging war on the entire notion of party affiliation? It, it could do us all, you know, positively.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, just a point of information, because something was said about, he said the, he testified about? How this negatively impacts minorities and, and, you know, other communities? This city council, for better or for worse, just a point of information, has more minorities on it and more women than the history of the city council.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry if it was unclear. I was talking about political minorities, just meaning people that are not in the majority party in any given district. I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that, just in response to what Commissioner Rose said. At, the problem with first past the post and a top two style election, rather than what I'm proposing, which is ranked choice voting? Which is what we have for special elections currently, is twofold. One, you have a situation which you just alluded to, where you could have two Democrats or two Republicans? In that final round of the election and you're leaving out a wide swath of the electorate that feels they're not representative. It's also totally discriminatory towards people in minor parties. You know, you won't have a green choice, you won't have a libertarian choice. So, even if it ends up with two candidates that are Republican and Democrat? You know that there's a lot of folks that are in the green or libertarian sphere? That wouldn't be comfortable with that choice in the general election. So, why not just do a November election? Nonpartisan, no party labels, just like we have for specials, with ranked choice voting?
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, more to come. Okay, just a reminder for the folks on Zoom, if you do have a question, please raise your hand. Anne Marie Akats.
Well, thanks, everybody, for taking a listen to our voices today. Am I coming through on the microphones?
Yeah.
Um, I wanted to address the city PEPs program, which I guess comes under public housing? In the city charter, I'm not sure, because I didn't have a, see a copy of it yet. It stands for Family Homeless and Eviction Prevention Services for anybody? Who might not realize what PEPs stands for. Okay, so I have some personal testimony. I know tenants? Who are living in apartments where their PEPs payments that they rely on are not being paid? So, they are now being evicted by their landlords. Some have paid their eligible shares, some pay nothing, but some pay a certain amount depending on their, their work status? And they might pay one or two hundred a month. And they've paid their one or two hundred a month? Reliably for months or years and they're still getting evicted? Because the majority of the rent has not been paid. I know of landlords who have PEPs tenants? Who are not getting their payments, so they cannot meet their budgets? Many landlords here in Staten Island area are in two family houses? Where only one apartment? Will be under the PEPs payment role, I guess you call it? They're now in danger of losing that house under foreclosure? By their bank, because they cannot make their mortgage payments? They have utility, threats from the utility companies for turning off their utilities? And there's no monies extra available to maintain the houses? So, the tenants are in there with toilets not working or laundry machines not working, refrigerators not working? There's also in between the landlords and the tenants are real estate agents? Who apparently work cross borough? A Queens real estate agent might be working on a Staten Island property? And the real estate agents are pulling their hair out and maybe having heart attacks? Because they can work for months and months getting the apartments arranged with, for someone? And it, it's not going through and they cannot get proper communication from the PEPs department? I just want to make sure I read everything I noted here. I wanted to mention personally, I'm a landlord in this position. My PEPs tenant is now, is also my neighbor. I'm, I'm usually a good neighbor in my community. I've been here thirty years in Staten Island and twenty-seven years in this house. And I raised my two kids in this house as a single mom. Right now, my PEPs tenant is a sing, is a single dad without his kids being in there with him. But he is, he, um? This is pretty irritating, because now my tenant hates me. He was told by either the real estate agent or the PEPs program? That the reason I'm not getting my money for about eight months now? Is because I never submitted my social security number to that department? And because my apartment did not pass inspection, that's what he's being told. However, I have an inspection that passed in early December? Paperwork from it? And not only that, but I had a PEPs tenant in there for a whole year previously? That had a past inspection? And my social security number was in the first packet of information that I sent to the agent? In late October of last year? So, for some reason? And I've gone to, I should say, I've gone in person down to the, the offices where they, where they line up the programs here on Bay Street? And I just was told I cannot talk to anyone because of the HIPAA program? And it's protecting, of course, the tenants. They don't want landlords to know the tenants' business, which I understand. But I said, please, just go to the, wherever the bank is and have them cut me a check? Because I have, you know, foreclosure notices from my bank and possibly my water can be turned on.
I want to, I want to make sure I understand. Are you, and, and I, I, I get your issue and? Let's make sure that this is brought to the proper folks. But is there anything you're asking us to do on the charter?
I wanted to, now, like I said, didn't have a, a chance to read the charter that, where it stands right now, but? So, I'm not sure where this would fit in, but I think the PEPs program needs to be overhauled, looked at seriously and maybe abolished. That's what I think. So, that's what I'm asking? The, you know, the council to do if they can fix anything with it? And I'm bringing it here today because? Well, first, I'm a member of this community, I know other people are having similar problems? And? It's just something that looks like I, I've already gone to my councilperson, the city advocate? In person to the offices a few times and I've gone kind of everywhere, so that's why I'm bringing it here. I'm not sure if it's, like I said, where it fits into the charter? But there's probably somewhere in there, little detail.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. And we'll, we'll, maybe someone can just get the information and we'll send it to the relevant agency.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got about thirty people, close to thirty people on Zoom. Do we have any? Questions or testimony from folks on Zoom? Do we have any of our commissioners on Zoom who would like to say anything? So, I'm going to take a couple of minutes since we, it's eleven AM? To just go around the table here with our commissioners? And as you know, all of our meetings are public? And just a chance to get some of your thoughts so far as to where we are and some next steps? I can go down the row or anybody would like to jump in? Kyle?
Thank you, Chair. I, I think that this process is important. I think that what we're hearing is important, whether or not it, it pertains directly to our, our mission, our, our work? As, as the Charter Revision Commission? And I appreciate the fact that you take those issues that not necessarily are issues that should be before us? But to, but to hear them out and make sure that we translate that back to the proper agency? So that the people of this city get, both get an opportunity to be heard? But also, the city has an opportunity then to react to those challenges? So, I just think that this process again is important and appreciate those people taking the time to come out and share their issues with us.
I agree, thank you, Kyle. I'm really impressed, because I'm, this is my first time really sitting on the charter? But not my first time dealing with other charters of leadership? But I'm impressed because of some of the stuff that I'm hearing? That the concern of the communities, like we here in Queens, we were in Queens, we were in Manhattan? And now we in Staten Island? And I'm just so glad that people care, the ones that's out? And I'm sure it's others that will be coming out to hear what's going on again. So, I'm impressed and we got a lot of work to do. And I'm glad that you're interested in doing it? And I'm looking forward to it. So, I'm listening and learning along with you, so we could get it fixed. Whatever it is? We will work together and make a difference.
Difference, so much.
Thank you.
You know, I, I think it's important for us to?
For us to consider.
Am I doing all right? You know, what, what, what is the challenge that New York City is facing today? And how is that related to the political process in New York City? That's, that's how I, you know, see partially what we're considering? In an era where hyper-partisanship is so very real and politics is so incredibly tribal? Do we need to adapt in any way, shape or form? So, I, I look forward to, to having that conversation over the, the coming weeks and, and months and serving the city.
What was said previously by the assemblyman up in Albany, Mike Sinusus? Really kind of was very impactful for me. I've served the city for thirty-two years with the NYPD and I just recently retired. So, what he had mentioned in regards to the city council? Unilaterally, and that's probably the wrong word, but when they're pushing out policy? Without considering any analysis or public hearing on the impact on the community? Is, is, is something that I think that we need to work on. What we really need to do is just to see? What the checks and balances are here? Are there going to just be partisan ideology that's just pushed forward? Without any community thought on, on the policies that they're putting forth? Is something I think that we could definitely work more on? For a, a more inclusive city, so that everyone can be safe? I think by and large, some of the policies that are pushed forward now is impacting the city? And it's where we are right now and this commission is taking all this input? And we're going to digest it and we're going to come up with a good resolution to perhaps, you know? Put more robust checks and balances to these processes.
If I may? The, the issue of nonpartisan elections has come up a couple of times now? And I'm just wondering, and maybe it's our responsibility to find? Data from those cities that have begun that process? To see if in fact, there is a, a large increase in the number of voters that participate? So, if you would, as Chair of, let us know how, how we should proceed gathering of that information. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, first of all, Frank Maron, thank you for that exchange. I'm, I'm a little out of fighting condition when it comes to hearings? Being that I'm a recovering politician? The, the fact is that being outside of elective office, believe it or not? I actually get to hear from more New Yorkers than ever before on the ground level? And people are frustrated or people are concerned by various different issues. Mr. Chairman, moving forward, I would love for more of these exchanges to occur. And so, I think that our challenge is, how is it that we make this? For lack of a better word, sexy? You know, do people, people don't know what they don't know. They don't know what the charter is. Quite frankly, it is, I, I have now the charter, you know, since I've been appointed on this commission on my phone now? And it's been several years since I even looked at the charter? You know, the charter is essentially the constitution of the city of New York? And, you know, how do we get people to know even what the charter is? How this city is governed by it? And how often maybe the things that they are frustrated about are so, because they're codified in the charter? You know, they can complain all they want about individuals who are elected or a body that's elected? And, and so this is an opportunity that happens every so often where we can, you know, change that? Or, or impact that or amend it or augment it? And so, I, I, I don't know how, I think our challenge is, how do we get it out there to New Yorkers? Average New Yorkers, that this is a perfect opportunity to be heard on everything that you have concerns about? Everything that you are frustrated about? But before they even do that, that this is not a commission to hear constituent services? Or constituent needs, with no disrespect to that? But it's about how do we change or amend the charter? And, and then have them present their case in the same passion that Frank did this morning? I'm looking forward to that. I hope that moving forward that we can get the, you know, the, the information out there? And have more and more people participate, not just on nonpartisan elections? But on public safety, on education, on transportation issues, on citing, you know, so on and so forth? And they would just, you know, give us more and more ammunition to debate and delivery as a commission moving forward. Thank you very much. Chris Lynch, I know you have your hand up.
Yes, good morning. I'm just super excited about being on board with the commission? And being here at this meeting today with Staten Island? And we heard some very good points here, especially apart on the election process? And I think Ruben hit it, the nail on the head is that the, the focus is mainly on the registered voters. You know, we have the elections that are there, but? How do we get the people to come out and vote in these primary elections? Not so much, should they be partisan, not be partisan? I think it was a very interesting dialogue. A lot of information was taken away from that. And I think as the charter commission, that, that is something that we should carefully look into? As it, as this is an issue that involves all of the boroughs? As we have learned so far from Queens as well as from here and Staten Island? So, yes, I'm super excited about being on this commission and looking forward to future hearings.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Before I provide my remarks, we do have one more speaker who signed up in person, Mona Davids.
Good morning. I had initially, I wasn't planning on speaking today, but? I'm going to anyway. Mr. Chair, I just want to just put out a disclaimer? Because I know it'll come up later. So, my name is Mona Davids. I'm the publisher of Little African News. I am the founder of the New York City School Safety Coalition as well as the New York City Parents Union? And I am also the community advocate that requested that Mayor Adams? Convene this commission, officially request that it, it's in the minutes and it's out there. So, I represent a number of different organizations. So, I don't know, Mr. Chair, how we can do this? But each organization has a specific issue related to the charter. So, I will start first with the New York City School Safety Coalition? The? Oh, and of course, let me just say this? I am from the Bronx, so I'm happy to see my borough president here. Co-op City to be precise. So, my name is Mona Davids. I'm a parent, I'm an education advocate. I care deeply about public safety and school safety. The New York City Safe, New York City School Safety Coalition is a, is a citywide coalition of parents? Community leaders, clergy as well? Who care deeply about ensuring the safety of our children inside and outside of schools? Traveling to and from schools? And we're deeply concerned about the rise in weapons? as well as youth violence and gun violence in our communities. The previous cohorts of the city council with Mayor de Blasio wanted to remove our school safety agents from under the purview of the NYPD. And parents throughout the city rallied, we rallied here, outside of Staten Island Borough Hall. We held rallies in every borough, including outside of City Hall. And we were able to push back, removing our school safety agents from under the purview of the NYPD back to the DOE. But the city council was intent on doing that. Such decisions, commissioners, should not be made by the city council. Such decisions when it comes to the safety of our children and our communities, whether it was the removal of school safety agents or something as the Harmony Stops Act, which we vehemently oppose, these decisions should not be made by the city council. These decisions should be made by the mayor, whoever the mayor is, and by the police commissioner. They are the experts. I know that the city council members like to say that, oh, they were elected by their communities. But commissioners, if we look at just the recent twenty-twenty-three Democratic primary, because as Frank said, we're pretty much a democratic city. And if we even look at the twenty-twenty-one municipal elections that included citywide elections, you will see that turnout when it comes to our elections are low. Therefore, when city council members say that they represent their constituents, when we look at the empirical data, which mind you, I do have right here on my laptop, the percentages for their districts for both the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-three primaries, most of them got elected, were elected with less than five percent of the registered Democratic voters in their district. And I'm just talking about the primary because the general really doesn't matter so much in most of our city council districts. So here we are, being dictated by a small group of people who have an anti-police bias, who are not putting the safety of our children, of our families, of our communities first because of their political ideology, who were voted in on average by less than five percent of the voters, the registered voters, registered Democratic voters in their districts. That to me is simply outrageous. So when it comes to the power of the city council with regards to public safety and the NYPD, we vehemently oppose the city council having the authority to dictate and to develop NYPD policy when it comes to protecting our communities. And we would like that language put on the ballot in the charter. And let us, New Yorkers, decide if we want unqualified people voted in by less than five percent of voters in their district to decide what's in the best interest of our city and our communities. So that's one.
Great.
That's New York City School Safety Coalition. Now I'll go on to the next, the next organization. As the founder and president of the New York City Parents Union, I must say it's very interesting to be back in this building. Years ago, I think it was two thousand and fourteen, when they were doing construction, the court was here in this building. And I was a plaintiff in David's First New York, which was a parents' union lawsuit with parents from throughout the city, including Staten Island residents, and that's why we were here. With that lawsuit filed, Judge Minato, God bless him, was the judge in that lawsuit. This lawsuit was about giving parents a voice and a seat at the table. That lawsuit commissioners in this Supreme Court building went all the way up to the Court of Appeals and parents won every step of that lawsuit. It was parents against the state, the teachers' union, and the city. The lawyer that got us from the Supreme Court, whose work put us over the top that we won this case in the Court of Appeals and now it's continuing with discovery, was Randy Mastro. And this is why the New York City Parents Union and other parents throughout the city, we oppose advice and consent when it comes to the city council. We keep on hearing that Randy Mastro, the work for Giuliani. What we're not hearing is all the work that Randy Mastro does for families, for communities of color. All the work that Randy Mastro does to support and help New Yorkers. So it comes back, commissioners, to the city being held hostage by the city council that is not really representing the populace. They're not representing us. And they are voting numbers, they're voting. That empirical data that no one can dispute shows they're not representing us should not stand in the way of us having qualified people representing the city and the city's interests and our interests as constituents, such as Randy Mastro. So I propose, and I would ask the commission to consider completely repealing advice and consent by the city council in the charter. Corporation Council, Department of Investigation, and whatever else that they can sometimes, that they can weigh in, should be completely repealed because DOI and Corporation Council should not have been put under the purview of the city council for advice and consent because they are keeping, and they would keep, great people like Randy Mastro from representing the interests of New Yorkers. So on that, we ask that you explore completely repealing that and putting that on the ballot for New Yorkers to decide. The last thing that I want to speak about, just as myself, in my personal capacity, is ranked choice of voting. Rank choice voting was decided by a referendum, yes. It was decided by a low turnout referendum. And that's the problem with New York City elections. We have voter apathy because New Yorkers are better. Rank choice voting, we were told, was going to increase voter turnout. But the rollout of rank choice voting was so poorly done that they actually had to have a city council hearing to talk about the crisis of the low turnout. Rank choice voting has not increased voter turnout. What happened with rank choice voting commissioners was rank choice voting, there wasn't information put out about rank choice voting in time, education on rank choice voting. Everything happened so late that our communities, our seniors weren't aware exactly what the hell rank choice voting was. And it wasn't just our seniors. Most New Yorkers weren't aware that for the first time, they're gonna have to rank the votes. They didn't understand what that meant. So many people didn't come out in twenty-twenty-three. It also has affected special elections as well. Now, I get it. Rank choice voting was voted in, but now we've had two elections plus some special elections to look at the data and see whether rank choice voting, whether this experiment has worked. And I also wanna add, when it comes to rank choice voting, not only did I disagree with it, I did not vote for it. But even after rank choice voting was passed, when I saw that our communities weren't being educated about this new way of voting, I personally did rank choice voting seminars, trainings. I did it with elected officials, I did it with the NAACP, I did it with my councilmen. I did rank choice voting trainings, they're on the webs, they're on the Facebook page, Rank Choice Voting NYC. Myself and others, we did all of this to educate our communities. The Campaign Finance Board came to my rank choice voting seminars. So this is about educating our voters so that they can be civically engaged. And rank choice voting has been an utter failure. So I am asking that you consider repealing ranked choice voting because it has not increased voter turnout. So I thank you for your time. I was gonna wait until you guys got to the Bronx, but
Happy to see you in Staten Island. So I appreciate it. That was a lot, a lot, and I didn't want to stop you because I think it was important to hear and you came all the way from the Bronx. A lot to process and if anyone has a comment or question, please.
First, just let me say thank you, thank you, thank you, Mona, for that wonderful, detailed presentation. You have given us, and especially me, something to really think about, look at. So you did a charge and you really spelled it out. So we have, like I said earlier, we have work to do. But you did a great, great plan, planned it out, well-planned. And this is what we need, as Ruben said earlier. You know, we need more dialogue, we need to know what direction our community, our city is going in. And thank you, that is, that was so much needed and I needed to hear it, I needed to hear it. So we definitely have work to do with you and so many others. Thank you.
As they say in Spanish, I'm caveli. You know, we are New Yorkers. I feel Bronx proud and I started this in my opening remarks by having a challenge to the city of New York. And that's how we do it in the boogie-down Bronx. So that's, in our seriousness, this is exactly what I mean when we move forward. This is what we want folks to, you know, to step up to the challenge of reviewing the charter as best they can or whatever issue. You don't have to read the whole charter, but whatever issue, find that in the charter and delineate and outline to us exactly what in the charter you want us to revisit or to deliberate, such as the way Ms. Davis did this morning. Well done.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Okay, so just a couple of comments. And I think the first one is for the team and the staff. Let's ensure that at one of our public forums, we have some experts on, someone's on, okay, we have some experts on election law, election reform. I think obviously there are lots of questions around it. One of the questions I would have is implementation. How long would that take? Would it, if we put something on the ballot, would it take effect in the next election? Or would you have to wait till something after? And I think as folks come in to testify to us, it'd be good to hear how other cities are doing it and how it works and if it has in fact increased turnout. And I wanna preface a lot of what we're doing with, we cannot force people to come out and vote. We have elections, people choose not to vote, we can't force people. But can we do something that will allow more voters to vote? Perhaps, but I think we have to hear from folks about what that means. Ruben, I agree with you, we gotta get people excited about the charter. It is not easy, but we will get people excited. And we will listen to people's voices. So, and speaking of voices, we have a member of the city council from Queens, council member Joanne Areola, and I'm gonna ask her to present her testimony now.
Thank you so much. And my testimony is on the public safety portion that this charter committee will be discussing. In an era where adherence to political ideology has overtaken common sense, it is regrettable that the mayor's office has been forced to take this step to protect the people of the city of New York. Thanks to the misguided policies from radical progressives at both city and state levels, New York's law enforcement agencies have been handcuffed. The decision to create this charter commission presents an opportunity to restore normalcy to the greatest city in the world and reverse the disasters unleashed by far-left lawmakers. The commission is not being created for no reason. It's being created because communities across the city have repeatedly expressed that they feel left out of the equation when it comes to passing laws and that criminally friendly legislation is making it increasingly harder for them to raise their families and do so and have businesses here. Through the creation of this commission, we can more directly address the concerns of the average, everyday New Yorker rather than simply cater to the loudest voices of the most radical voices. Voices which tend to drown the real issues to hyper-focus on narrow partisan politics. I support the mayor and his decision to create this commission and I urge all of my colleagues who wish to truly represent the interests of the everyday New Yorkers to do the same. Thank you for the time to weigh in.
Thank you, council member. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the councilman? Okay, I'm sure we will see you at another commission hearing in the coming weeks, but we appreciate your time today. Okay, before we motion to adjourn, are there any other members here who would like to testify? Is there anyone else on Zoom that we may have missed or that just decided they would like to testify? Now, do we have any members of our commission who would like to add any final thoughts? Okay, hearing done, I will ask for a motion to adjourn this hearing. Second, all in favor and the opposed and the abstentions. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great day.